I'm John.
We're going to call the meeting to order at six oh six P M. If everybody could please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have the need for an executive session?
No.
Okay. Correspondence. You received in your packet a letter from Gregory McDonald of Bon Shonik and King.
And again, just a little bit of follow up on that. That was when our last capital project update, we had after McGraw and current construction out here. We had a little bit of a conversation about liquidated damages and merit putting that into the contract language. We went out again, had a meeting with our legal counsel, and that's what that letter is response to basically addressing again, liquidated damages and new contracts and school construction in a school setting and basically saying that what they recommend is not liquidated damages, but actual damages and that is a line of the argument on contact action. But just wanted to follow up from that from two months ago.
Yeah, so the passages they have at the bottom actually talks about the other damages, the other damage. They talk about the actual loss of use and you have to hire somebody else.
Yep. Yep. So that's what I mean. You will be in the contract documents.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, that brings us to policies for first reading. Approved policy number three, two, four, zero, public sales on school property for first reading. May I have a motion? I heard Brian and Chris.
So again, just in our effort to clean up policies, this is one that I was looking at and again, comparing what this was, we're trying to be universal in our format. How are we getting it to you guys? The whole thing made sense with you. We have the cover page. Area one does not have a policy on this, so it's a strictly what you claim policy. And again, we kind of internally discussed it. We still thought there was merit keeping the policy. So as you can see, there's a slight update and what we like to do instead of saying a permit would be required, which I did not have such thing in place. Again, permission in writing would be the exception to how again, you can have public sales on school property.
I just had a question. Well, first of all, I like the format. It was real easy to follow. Yes, thank you. This is probably the easiest that's been so far. So great. Thank you. Yep. Um, the only thing that I would thought of when I read through this is like the fall festival didn't really fall under because there are people that are outside that are selling. And it's not an apparent organization or whatever that it's in that.
Yeah. And I guess when I think like the fall festival, that does go through our N L scheduler system, which again, basically the organizer of that event, Mary Hibbert is basically agreeing to what's going on. Under all that, I think it does still follow the proper channels with approval from the building principal to myself to go in for insurance purposes. I'm, I guess I'd be okay with that being under that umbrella, but do you think it should be more clarified?
I thought it might be, but it just seemed to fall a little bit outside of the way this was written. So I just was wondering, because I know that's been historic and it's just, yeah.
Unfortunately, the fall festival is done. They have closed the group and closed the five oh one C three. So.
Okay.
But there have been things over the years, like crafts, sales, you know, things like that. Yeah.
I wasn't aware.
So again, those events pop up as long as basically you don't want to find off, it's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approved policy number three, two, four, one, advertising in schools for first reading. May have a motion. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Tom. Go ahead.
Thank you. So again, going off that cover sheet, this is a policy that again has not been updated since nineteen ninety one. But looking at again, the area one policy, very minimal changes, but there is a few. The crisis either highlighted, but the biggest one was that it did kind of insert that or conflict with the rules of the border regions, which is a pretty important thing to have in there. And it did have, again, at the bottom, a highlighted section of where some of this language is found, if you wanted to seek further information on it. So really, again, just to update the policy from nineteen ninety one, two thousand point two, those few little changes and for that legal reference of the constitution in there.
I had a little question. Our F C, I thought we were taking out his.
If they have to, we try to catch all those, but obviously we we missed a few. I will do that for a second. Thanks, Brian.
Any other questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approved policy number three, two, four, two, solicitation of funds for first reading. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second?
A second.
Thank you, Brian.
So again, cover sheet, there's not actually one policy on this one, but it's policy that we've had for quite some time. We did see merit in still keeping this policy. And again, we were thinking more along the lines of like athletic events where there might be a fifty fifty percent pause or things like that. It made a lot of sense. And again, you could see that proposed new language again, for various fundraisers that might occur. The superintendent would have the authority to make exceptions to this policy in cases where solicitation is considered to be expressed interest. The more like a community fundraiser, things like that, that must be getting brought up.
I think that's better than the board. Decision can be made as.
It's something that's on the fly, you know, like it could be the next day, maybe we don't have time for it.
What about you mentioned fifty fifty raffles? I know that some of the booster groups do fifty fifty raffles, like boys' basketball is doing them. Would that still be allowed? Do I need to make sure that they contact?
I, I think that's kind of like the umbrella of the land is superintendent aware those are occurring. So it's, it's still okay. If we didn't want to handicap ourselves and say we can never do new, you know.
Right. No, I just want to make sure that there wasn't another process that they should be following.
Yeah, I think it's like something new that we've never done before. That's why it should probably be me to land and say, hey, we're thinking about this for the upcoming whatever. Is this okay?
So, so this is, this is kind of weird, but so I was even thinking about like the concessions at the football or volleyball games. I mean, if they're being run by the public, you know, members of the public, that they're not always necessarily under an auspice of a group. So they're usually parents of somebody doing it.
I think we wouldn't have you for youth club though. I don't think anyone's actually doing it for.
No, I'm not like volleyball games that the varsity volleyball game had a concession stand and things like that. So I mean.
Yeah, I think that's often the benefit of the group though. Right?
They're doing it through boosters.
Yeah, but boosters isn't, it's it's a member of the public and boosters isn't necessarily under the school. Again, I don't mean to be picky about it, but it's, it really, I mean, like the football concessions are great because it's not, it goes other places and it is not by a school group and it's run by members of the public. They're saying run by a hot dog, they're going fast, the game's over.
So if you have any language you'd like to see that would include something like.
I, I, I don't know. I'm just saying that to me, that, that doesn't fall under this. I mean, other than it could be approved, but I would rather see it standing because those are things that happen all the time.
Right. I want to have a policy so that somebody doesn't say, oh, there's a big crowd in many point schools. I'm going to, I'm going to set up shop for profit for my own personal profit. That's what we want to prevent.
I get that, but when you're right, it, it doesn't cover some of the real normal things, then, then the policy isn't really.
Well, this is interesting for first reading. So I mean, honestly, if you have better language, you'd like to maybe see incorporated in between now and second reading, obviously give it to us and we can look at it. We'll take it, you know, crack at it too. And we can figure it out and bring it to the group for second reading.
And I don't have any problem with that. I just would rather have it be more inclusive, especially if it's up.
No, absolutely. Well, that's what I'm trying to do here.
Yeah. So you're thinking of maybe adding something like the financial relation members of the public. Like do you want maybe adding school booster programs maybe or clubs affiliated with?
School. Something like that, just so that it's, it's, yeah. So it's not somebody saying that, oh, we want to sell whatever in here. It's still connected into the school. It's still covered. It's, it's not under the umbrella because we found out before that some of that stuff isn't really under the school. So it has to be listed that it's still, you know.
They would still need to let you in.
Right. Yeah, it's, I mean, some of them are just totally standing. I mean, we do them every single game, basketball.
Music boosters, things like that.
Football one is the biggest one because that's not under.
Is the, is the football one normally the youth club though?
No, no, the football concessions are done by music boosters through the Eagles. Oh, Eagles. Okay. So another club.
Right. And it's okay, probably that's the biggest one.
I like that idea. Like the honor society wanted to do a big sale or something like that. Yeah.
So we'll bring something.
That will be under the.
Yeah, it'll be under school. Yeah. Make it in there.
Yeah. Someone has a light bulb idea between now and then let us know. We'll take it back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approved the removal of policy number seven, one, five, zero, educational services for married pregnant students for first reading. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second? Thank you, Brian.
So this policy was last reviewed in nineteen ninety one. It's not a required policy. There's not a comparable Erie one policy. And the fact that as a New York State public school, we are required to educate all students. We felt like this was a redundant statement that we would educate married and pregnant students. And accommodate any, you know, need, needs or anything that would happen. We are all, you know, required to do. Yeah.
So, so the next couple is covered by Ed Long. Just this one also is, okay, I just have a question. Is it covered now?
Even remember this law because when I was giving a kid the experience in nineteen, whatever besto had a special school for students who were pregnant. But Whitney Point let students who are pregnant be part of the school. We were always a curve ahead. So I'm glad we're getting rid of this.
Any other questions from the board? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approved the removal of policy number seven, two, one, two, minimum yearly course requirements for first reading. May I have a motion? Thank you, Brian. I'm sorry, was that you, Chris?
Yeah. So this one, again, one of the things that we've been talking about is what needs to be a policy? What are regulations and cleaning it up? So this was looked at in nineteen ninety one, two thousand and four, two thousand and eleven. It's not required. And we felt that these requirements are not policy, but part of our annually reviewed high school course guide, and that that was the best place for that information.
Any questions from the board?
And just so, you know, as you're prepared, as we go through that, there's a chunk of policies that are similar to this that are long right now because state ed changes, graduation requirements and all of that. And we really need to get not have those because we just have to follow what state ed says. And they're, you know, especially in the last six or seven years, they've been changing pretty rapidly. So having a policy is one redundant and ends up being long very quickly.
And it makes people angry when they're trying to.
Right.
And then you have a policy that you continually update. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approved the removal, policy number one, three, three, two, duties of the school district treasurer for first reading. May I have a motion? Thank you, Brian. And a second?
I'll second, but I think it's policy one, three, 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 not one, three, 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 two. You said two, but I just want to make sure.
We're on one, three, three, three. Yeah. Are we on two? No, we're on one, three, three, two. Unless, unless it's.
No.
I don't have a one, three, three, two.
I, I.
It's in the different.
Yes, I got it.
Okay, this is treasurer for whose. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
But I have a, are you still second?
Second.
Thank you.
I opened the law.
This one you're saying?
Sure. So again, just trying to clean up policies. We had the next few listed and we didn't reach out to legal counsel. Again, this is not a policy. It's just really a job description. If anyone really wanted to know what any of these official titles are, they could just look them up. On board or New York State website. So again, in order just to clean up our, our policy page, so it's not so cumbersome. The next view again are literally just job descriptions that aren't actual policy.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approved the removal, policy number one, three, 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 duties of the tax collector for first reading. May I have a motion?
Oh.
Thank you, Eddie. And a second?
That's right.
Thank you, Brian. Same thing?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No, we appoint them at the reord meeting, but it's at Brink County.
Yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approved the removal, policy number one, three, three, four, duties of the independent auditor for first reading. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tom. Second, thank you, Chris. This follows the same. All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approved the removal, policy number one, three, three, five, duties of the school activities treasurer for first reading. May I have a motion? Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Eddie. This one again. Okay. And questions from the board? All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approved the removal of policy number one, three, three, six, duties of the school attorney for first readings. May I have a motion? Thank you, Brian. The second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions from the board?
I mean, we get a text break or a break on their turn.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approved the removal of policy number one, three, three, seven, duties of the school physician for first reading. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second? Thank you, Brian. Ditto? Any questions from the board?
The I A P, I the I A P process decides who's supposed to be on special education committees, right?
That's another part of just to clean up. A lot of the stuff is just not quite correct.
Thanks.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstain? There are no policies for second reading. That brings us the comments from the public. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. Ms. Black will be keeping track of questions and make sure they are passed to the appropriate persons. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain, entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize that right now our nation and our community are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess. We ask that speakers, please address their comments to the board directly rather than to the audience. In the unlikely event that the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. The board will now entertain public comments. Each individual speaker is allowed in three minutes. The individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so. Please state your name and residency before you begin. And just as a reminder, there is a second opportunity for comments from the public at the end of the meeting. All that being said, is there anybody who would like to speak this evening? Do you have anybody who signed up? Nobody. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to commendations. Okay, we would like to commend the T R A sixth grade E L A teacher Renee Zanater for being awarded the Golden Apple Award by News Channel thirty four. Well preserved. The following Whitney Point High School students for their induction to the National Honor Society on December first, twenty twenty two. Megan Baker, Michelle Baker, Valerie Barrows, Owen Hubbard, Holden Maslin, Ian McMillan, David Tope and Garrett Tope. Mister D'Imperio, Miss Holland and the Toyota, the Yoga Riverside Academy Grade seventh and eighth grade chorus band for a wonderful winter concert held on December eighth, twenty twenty two. Mrs. Cook and the high school student council for assembling and distributing holiday food boxes that the Whitney Point community members in need. The meals will be distributed in December and will include donated food items, food purchased with donations from area businesses and individual turkeys donated by Catholic charities for seventy families. Broome County Executive Jason Garner for proclaiming November twenty first, twenty twenty two as Whitney Point Field Hockey Day in Broome County. Broome County Legislature Matt Hildebrand for presenting at the varsity field hockey team with certificates of recognition. Whitney Point High School senior Bryson Smith for being selected to represent Whitney Point as a quarterback on the twenty twenty two section four Ernie Davis team. Walmart Portland in Portland for donating three hundred and fifty dollars worth of hygiene supplies for the high school care closet. And Mrs. Guzman, Miss Prokop, the C E A cafeteria team, grade chairs, Miss Fricken, Mister Lawdick, student interns, volunteers, teachers and the staffers successful cookies and compassion event held on December ninth, twenty twenty two. Also, Mister Jones, Mrs. Jones, Miss Poland and the High School Drama Club with a production of The Crucible by Arthur Miller, the ones which were held on Friday, December ninth and Saturday, December tenth.
Can I add one go in? And I know that Dan and Molly can confirm, my students had to do service in my class. And some of my students were struggling because they hadn't got some service done early. And then they came up with this bright idea to collect gloves, hats, warm clothes, socks, clothing for children. And they did that over the holidays and they gave several bags to the T R A for gloves, hats, mittens and several clothing items to C E A. And my students faces and their reflections were absolutely amazing. And they said, it's made me believe I want to really be a teacher. So I just want to say that it's great to see the students doing.
Anything else? Okay, old business. There is none. That brings us to the T R A update presentation by Mister Sweeney and Mrs. Lamorelia.
You. Mrs. Lamorelia will not be able to join us this evening. Okay, thanks. Dr. Whittle, it wasn't twenty four hours before there was a need that we were made aware of so that some of that went to use right away and right in time, just in time for the cold weather as it was coming. I had a parent come in the next day thanking me very, so like that's that thing.
I will pass it on because those students were so, so they just couldn't believe how much, in fact, one student reflected and said, I've never been of need as a student. I never realized how much students needed teacher to see this.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Update this evening. Again, Mrs. Lamorelia is not able to join. What I'd like to do is spend a few minutes reviewing these areas as C E A did last week. I want to start briefly with our SMART goals. Talk a little bit about the guiding coalitions and the work that they're doing, the really important work at the T R A. There's been a big shift in terms of what it looks like. And I think it's important for the board to know that. You're going to be hearing that term a lot, guiding coalitions. So I wanted to find that a little bit tonight. And I know you've heard it once from Miss Gillette, but I kind of want to paint a picture of what it looks like at our particular building because it does, it does have a unique look in each building. And then talk about some of our initiatives that we've gotten started in the last couple of months as well to, to address some of the concerns that we're seeing. And there are concerns that we're seeing and we're tackling them one at a time. So if you, then I want to leave a little bit of time at the end for questions and answers. If you have any questions as I'm going, please don't hesitate to stop me and ask me to clarify or ask any questions that you may have. Our SMART goals, they will look very familiar to you. In November, the C E A presented their goals. Again, we're no longer working with Sean Brady, but the district meets in the summertime, sets their goals, and then all three buildings for consistency purposes develops our goals in unison. So we also created our goals for grades four through eight in the areas of E L A proficiency and math proficiency. And if one, if it's jumping off the page a little bit on the bottom there, you will see that our math proficiency, which was relatively strong before or pre pandemic really crashed and burned. So we are currently, the kids who tested last year, tested twenty nine percent proficiency. So we stuck with the five percent idea or, or figure to thirty four. We're certainly hoping and working towards having that number be higher. But the truth is, and as you know, I don't want to call it garbage data that we have from the last few years, but it's unreliable data and we're really looking to establish new baselines. So we're starting with this baseline fully expecting to increase the numbers. And I think starting this year, maybe some from last year, but starting this year, we'll have more reliable data to build from moving forward. But you can see that definitely math is a great need, a great need for focus right now. So I'll discuss that a little bit tonight. Yes.
Quick question. I think we may have asked this last time. Is it possible to get numbers pre pandemic? Like what, what did they look like before?
Oh, you do. Okay, never mind.
I'm glad to hear the response.
There's a website that shows all the data, New York State data.
Okay.
That gives you all the data from the pandemic to now.
Okay, for the T R A for the five grade levels, the E L A in two thousand and nineteen was actually at forty five percent. So the E L A is about the same.
So that's. Serious about man.
The math was up around. The math was up around fifty-six percent. Yes, it is huge.
That's why.
You've heard, you, you've read the articles, you've heard, you know, New York State kids, United States kids.
Yeah.
Really, you know, they suffered in tremendous ways during the pandemic, but math scores across our state and across the country tumbled. And now it's time, you know, it's building back time.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I know this was introduced once. I just want to start there because again, you're going to be hearing it a lot. The school, what is the guiding coalition? It's a leadership team designed to be an integral component of leading, inspiring, supporting the professional learning community work that is now underway. We used to have building leadership teams. We used to, you know, you heard BLTs. We used to have department chair meetings on a monthly basis to do a lot of this work. Now all of it is under the umbrella of guiding coalitions. And just to clarify that a little bit, there's three different um, types of guiding coalition. So each time I'm, I'm speaking to the faculty or any group, I have to be very specific in terms of the group that's meeting and what their purposes are. So I want to give you an introduction to that. Um, there's something called the guiding coalition, and I'll review each of these briefly. There's something called the guiding coalition plus. We have a guiding coalition professional learning community group that meets on a monthly basis. And guiding coalition planning meeting that meets on a monthly basis. So these groups are meeting two or three times a month. And I'll just kind of touch on each of those. Um, our guiding coalition plus, this is kind of the uh, what I think sometimes in my mind is a Sean Brady-like process. This is where we want to get is, you know, our, our core guiding coalition and also add as many constituent groups so we have as many voices as possible. Um, the expanded guiding coalition groups, this is, we bring in staff members. And we're bringing members of the secretarial and, and aides, community members, and students who are appropriate. Um, as, as we move up and the kids get older, obviously they have a little bit more of say. Um, we're experimenting now with how to get more student voice at the TRA. Just this morning, the student, the new student council officers were um, elected or nominated, I should say, and they were just announced this morning. So I'll be meeting with them next week. Start those conversations, which really I'm looking forward to. It's one of the things at the high school I, I really miss from the high school is conversing with the, with the high school age kids, but uh, some of the conversations I've been having with, with our officers as they were putting their species together and running. I thought, you know what, those conversations are going to be meaningful here too. Um, so anyway, getting off task already. The guiding coalition plus is, is that large group and we're with a very specific goal of establishing and monitoring our SMART goals. So after we get our tests, this group doesn't, they meet in the beginning to set the goals. We'll wait for that data. When we get that data back, that group will come back into action and help rewrite the SMART goals with, uh, with updated information. So that group doesn't meet as often. The PLC group. There's, there's two slides for this. And again, what, what we did, being just to try to maximize our time together. But remember something Mister Jaker said for a couple of years ago in terms of how to make those groups a little bit more efficient. With our PLC group, we broke into two strands. We have a math strand and an ELA strand. I will share some of the information that our math strand is working on because it's really important work. We are building some foundational blocks. And then I'm going to ask Mrs. Burns to touch on, um, some of the work that's happening in the ELA strand. She's pinching for Miss Lamorilla and she's gotten up to speak quickly. Um, so that's okay with the superintendent, being that she hasn't we haven't gotten to that part of the agenda, could I have? Okay.
He's the intern, right?
Yes, yes.
Alright, there are two main initiatives right now from the math group. And what we're looking to do is add math support to our fourth and fifth grade classes. And we're doing so, that's the teaching assistance that we're bringing to the district. Um, my, in my mind, that I'm working, again, I I'm working with the team, the guiding coalition, to make sure I'm taking as much information as I can, especially from the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade teachers. Because they, I'm not going to pretend after three months to know more than they know in terms of what the needs are. But what, but we know definitively is that math fluency is weaker than we've seen probably ever. And it speaks to the, the, the teachers, the veteran teachers, it's the math fluency. It's not the only area that took a hit during the, the pandemic. But that's an area that is, there's a spotlight on in terms of our kids are struggling and they don't have the fluency that they used to. So we're looking at this as a wonderful opportunity to have more teaching assistants work in the classrooms with math, with the idea of math fluency with small groups. And I'm sure you've reviewed this in your, in your meetings. The difference being now with the teaching assistants is that they, under the auspices or under the guidance of a certified teacher, can be working with small groups of kids. So this will give more individual, or not individual, small group help to the kids who really need it. Um, with our math specialists, the teachers, and Mister Herb kind of overseeing what that curriculum is and what the exact work is um, of groups of kids. So that's one area that we're actively working on. I've, I've gathered a lot of information from the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. I'm still waiting on one more set of information and we're trying, and we'll pull off our next meeting before the holiday break. So we can put this into action soon. And then the other major initiative with mathematics is that we are looking to add a new math model or I'll say six, seven, and eight. I'm not sure we can do six, seven, and eight all at once. Um, but we're getting deep into the weeds now and, and just kind of a, what that looks like. A couple of years ago, um, Mike Givenco, you might know him. He's our, he's our math specialist at the secondary level especially. He's our department chair at the TRA of math. We went, and other people as from the district as well, but we went to a professional development uh, PLC session in Windsor where a guy named Mike Mattos spoke, and he's one of the leaders that were starting to study under PLCs. And he was a former principal that ran a much bigger, uh, middle school than we have. But he got our attention that day in terms of presenting models of math that sometimes you see at the high school, but not often in middle school. Probably the best example I can give is that it's right here in our high school. When you come into ninth grade, you, if you're a strong math student, or if you're on grade level, you can take one year of algebra, take the exam and move on. For our students who struggle, that's tough, forty minutes a day, even with academic intervention services. Um, so we have a model in, in our high school where you can learn or get ready for that algebra exam and either forty weeks or eighty weeks. Some students take two years. And a lot of our students take advantage of that and it works really well. It's a good model. We're looking to bring that model down into the eighth grade next year. And I'm getting a little greedy as we're starting to do the planning in terms of, okay, if we can, can we do it in the eighth? Can we also do with the seventh? Can we also, you know, we're putting a plan together, a phased-in plan. We're starting the idea with doing with the current personnel that we have and revamping AIS, because we do have a math AIS teacher who I think is going to be used very differently in September. Um, but we're trying to, we're starting our thinking. And I think Miss Sexton in the district office, um, they are permitting me to bring Joe Kuchar back into that conversation because Joe was the architect along with Joanne of the current master schedule. Joe and I did a lot of work earlier, um, together, I don't know if that was ten or twelve years ago, building that master schedule. And there's a lot of positive things about that master when it comes to our encore classes, kids having, you know, the opportunity to take ten-week courses and then switch. We're not looking to blow any of that up, I guess is where I'm going with that. But can we get it? Uh, we will get it. We'll figure it out how to provide that type, that different format for our eighth graders next year. So if they're coming in a grade level, they're going to have the same math experiences they've always had. If they're coming in below and a lot of our kids are coming in below, we want to build that into their day. Where they, instead of getting forty minutes of math, they're getting an addition, every other day, they're getting an additional forty minutes. And what that allows, without going too far into it, what that allows the teachers to do is to spend forty minutes a day with the essential standards. And I'll stick with the eighth grade with those essential standards because we can't go and then the additional time to do some what I'll call backfilling and assess the kids, figure out where their needs are. And so we can do both at the same time. That's the only way we're going to get kids up to speed is to, you can't slow down when it comes, they're still taking the eighth grade exam at the end. They have to be ready for that, but they also need the other. And I think we're, we're working on a good plan um, to bring that into play. So those are two, again, I, I, a lot of good work is happening, a lot of good things is happening. And we're trying to, I'm feeling some pressure to get it done kind of quickly. Um, you know, you've heard our, our PLC, um, timeframe. It's a three-year timeframe. Um, and we're in year two of that. TRA had a tough year last year, and I'd say that we have one foot in year one still and one foot in year two, and that's not a bad place because we're making progress. Just feel the need to have the, the foot on the gas a little bit heavier right now. And, um, we're moving and getting the support we need. I think it's going to, we're in the midst of some exciting changes that are going to help kids with those two areas. I think I'm going to ask if there's any questions now before, because we're going to totally shift to ELA. And if, if there's any math-specific questions, that might be better.
I just had a comment. I'm, I'm very pleased to see that those students that are at level or above still have the opportunity to continue. Because I know that historically, and I don't mean here, but anywhere, those are the students that, that when things slow down, they get hit the hardest. And I don't, not in a bad way, but I love that. That's still in, in place and they can still do what they need to with, with trying to then help the ones that are in need. So kudos to that. That's that's fantastic.
I'm glad you brought that up because I didn't include and, and I took her granted perhaps that we will also keep the, I mean, the accelerated option is still there and that's not going anywhere.
We're going to blow up what was there. I appreciate that. I really appreciate that because a lot of times when you have to make choices, it's usually at the expense of some of those other things. So thank you. That's
Right. So I'll introduce Mrs. Burns and I'll just say quickly, uh, kind of, yesterday was her first day. Yesterday was an interesting day, as you can imagine. So and it was at the very end of the day with the faculty meeting, in the beginning of the faculty meeting, I was introducing a new teacher and I was introducing Mrs. Burns. And I was finished introducing the new teacher and turned around and Amanda was nowhere to be thought, nowhere to be seen. I thought already. I said to the math team, don't tell me that.
I was picking up the sign up. On assignment. Um, so for those of you who don't know me, I'm Amanda Burns. Um, I've actually worked here for eleven years as a special education teacher at the high school. Um, so I recently went back to BU to get my administrator degree, and I'm currently in the intern phase. Um, so I'm almost done. So um, I'm just going to talk to you a little bit about the ELA strand because that was Julie's, um, position that she was, she was in. Um, so she worked closely with Renee Zanater. Um, they really want to increase communication between the AIS providers and the classroom teachers. So now they've actually scheduled time multiple times a month where they're going to meet. So those academic interventionist, um, support teachers are actually going to meet with the ELA teachers and they're going to, um, talk about like what's going on in their classroom so that they can be on the same page. Um, for the second one, the state testing aligned benchmarks are three times per year being added. So in September, um, they did one in January and at the end of May. Um, they're giving assessments like I-ready that they're going to use to kind of inform their practice. So they're talking about what's going well and then what might need to be adjusted. Uh, so some areas that they think, you know, looking at all the, the data. They're going to get together, put their heads together and kind of come up with some, you know, re- research-based interventions to help the kids. So, um, another note, uh, that she said is they're looking for ways to positively like introduce state testing so that more kids get involved and that they don't see it as such a negative thing. Um, so they're talking about maybe pep rallies and breakfasts to kind of promote like the importance of state testing. Um, so we're hoping that, you know, with working with that, the kids will see it not as such a negative thing. Um, so those are kind of their initiatives.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns.
And I just maybe suggest, um, you know, I had a unique experience with my grandson during COVID. Okay, so they didn't have to take the state test, right? I encouraged you greatly. I said, you've studied really hard. And he took it and he passed. Maybe bring in some students who struggled and, uh, would like to speak to the fact that it's not so scary and it helps you feel confident in yourself. So maybe it's another option, especially at that age that they're kind of influence, you know, peers are influential. So maybe that might help.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I'll bring that back to the team. Thanks.
Also, I want to say all this quickly and then I'll move quickly. Um, Renee Zanater, who was celebrated earlier by Miss Sexton. She is, uh, she's, he's a strong, strong teacher, probably wrapping up her career at the end of this year. And she's taking the leadership role with working a lot of, with working with a lot of our younger ELA teachers, our newer ELA teachers. And she's the perfect person to do it because her data is rock solid. Where, you know, we have ups and downs. Her ELA sixth grade data is always really, really solid. She's the person for it. And she, uh, is enthusiastically doing some of that work, um, teacher-to-teacher work. As a result of the conversations at Guiding Coalition. Okay, and our last group, the really important group of Guided Coalition is our planning group. What we did here, um, as you remember probably, uh, TRA had a little bit of a rough year last year. And one of the responses, uh, from our district was to bring in, uh, Pat Phallett, Dr. Phallett, to, to work with a lot of constituent groups. To fun, to get a lot of perspective, would get a lot of feedback. And she broke that into categories and put a report together. That work is being taken very seriously to make sure that we're listening to all of those voices. Um, so what we're doing with the first half of the year really, i- i- is the planning group is, is taking the information from each of those groups and studying that and putting things into, or trying to initiate or address some of the problems that were brought up last year within that group. I want to give you an example that'll help it make a little bit more sense. But you should know that the district and you had allocated for that, you'd supported that, bringing in Dr. Phallett to do that work. It was really good work. She, it's, it's, um, categorized very well and it really brings in voices from across um, the building and the district that we're looking at. So that's being taken very seriously and getting a hard look. Um, an example, our, our November meeting, we were looking at the feedback from students during that meeting. We had looked at faculty and staff. And, and October and November, we looked at the information back or the feedback from students. By the end of that meeting, the idea was to, we we really need to start the feedback from the students is that we, it would be worth our while to spend more time on incentives, on recognize, recognition and incentives for our students who are doing things right. There was a lot of focus on, on some negative behaviors last year and it needed attention and there's still a little of that that needs some attention now. But we have to make sure that we're recognizing our kids who are really doing a good job, coming to school every day and working hard. Um, so that's really the impetus behind that committee. So we, in schools that, you know, who's interested in doing it? After that meeting, I put it out the day after, instantly got a strong, we, I think we had eight people at that first conversation. And most of it coming from an elementary level from four, five, and six, which I was pleased to see because a lot of the you know, dances and things like that are still run by the student council for the older kids. But we really want to put, put a focus on the younger grades. If we can strengthen our younger grades, it's just going to strengthen our dis, our building and our district. So that committee is hard at work now. Which I was so encouraged last week, I went to my first PTA meeting of the, um, of the year. Really nice group, um, that's working there. That was one of the best meetings I've had in a long time and they are looking to get behind us and work with us shoulder to shoulder as we bring more opportunities to kids. So we were last Monday night, it might have been, we're talking about like a bad minute for heart type of the thing for the, for our fourth and fifth graders. Um, kids night out, how can we make that stronger and how can we add more of them? Um, a lot of the conversation was around fourth grade. How do we have a friendlier transition? The breakfast is great, but we can do better. And what else can, well, how can we make that better so that families are feeling a more, more of a um, a welcome in, into our building like they do with the CEA. The CEA does such a great job of that. There's no reason why we can't. We, with a little bit of focus, we can, we're looking to, um, beg, borrow, and steal a lot of the positives that are coming from that building. And, uh, it's, it's a motivated group. I love the PTA. Tie, but that's, that's an example of, um, of the work that comes out of that committee. We have one more grouping, you might say, to study, um, and that's on administrative leadership, what the groups were looking for there. Out of, out of admin and safety. So we'll wrap that work up again for the holiday break. And then we'll set our agenda for the second half of the year. Um, so that's kind of a, an overview of the work that we're doing in our committees. We're also moving away from the committees. We are, we have some initiatives in the areas of belonging and inclusion. Um, the school board was addressed, um, I don't know if it was the last, the last meeting or the one before that, we definitely have some issues. Of not everybody feeling welcomed, not everybody feeling safe, and I think some residual effects of a very, without getting political, a very divided country that filters down to our kids and into our classrooms and into our hallway sometimes, and we're looking to address that. And we are addressing that. Um, a couple of the ways that we're doing it. Um, we've helped, we've asked for the help of BOSI's and we're contracting with BOSI's to come in, do some assessment in terms of what's looking good, what are we doing right in the building and what might need more attention. So we're just at the beginning of that. I think we've, um, we've had two meetings and heading into our third there and starting to get a little bit of feedback. Um, equity, equality, looking at things like that to make sure that all of our students are feeling like they're welcome in our building. Um, we're also in conversation. We're also in conversation, and we, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and myself met with a just about ten days, two weeks ago, maybe, we met with the presenter that opened up our superintendent's day in September. That person was, Mr. Davis is his name, very well received. So we were hoping that he could now bring that, a lot of his messaging that the faculty and staff responded to so well to our student body, because that's our next step, is we've got to be bringing to the students in small groups so that it's meaningful. Unfortunately, he, I think with the ACTAR administration coming into play, I think he's looking at a promotion, and he's going to be, I think that's going to take all of his time. So he's going to be stepping out of some of that work. But he and his wife who came to meet with us, they have children who are, started moving into that field, are working along with us. Whether they're going to be who comes and works with our kids or not, we're not sure yet, but we're looking to, we're casting some, casting some lines and see the need and actively working on trying to meet that need.
Do you have a name for the program that you're working with BOSIS on?
Yeah, well, that was the last one.
For the, for the assessment, just determine, to help you to remember, you know, for fun. It's, you know, BOSIS closer, it's a D F, the service that we are participating in with six other districts. Wonderful. And so we're in the process of developing what are those assessments? What are the things that we can take a look at and then the Florida? And that will not only be for the TRA, but for all three. Okay, you're just presuming it here. Okay, great, excellent. Thank you.
All right, and that's, so I would say to wrap things up, we're off to a pretty good start at TRA this year. I will not say it's easy. We're having, there's good days and bad, which was, which was expected, but starting to have a few more good days than bad per week, which is, which is moving in the right direction. A lot of work ahead, but I do think that we're off to a pretty good start. Any comments, questions for me?
I would just like to say, again, very impressed with all of the items that you guys are taking the lead on. I've never seen the school do such a great job in categories that desperately need attention. So good luck and hope that you continue to get the support that you need to do a good job. So thank you.
Thank you. It's important work. So thanks for recognizing.
It makes it feel lighter as a board member, as a community member, to know that there are good days, and it's not. No, it is, and I'm so glad that the people that are there are there doing what you're doing to, to, to just, just redirect. Not change, but redirect back to the way that our community goes. So I appreciate that. I, I thought that was very interesting with the incentives. For a long time, I know in many districts, and it's so interesting, it came from students that unintentionally trying to, 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 you know, help some of the students that needed the most help. It really did slam some of the students that were doing, always have done, and they just felt like they weren't there. So it just, I love this, that it came through, it was heard, and those students are kind of like, hey, wait a minute, what about me? Well, it's nice that everybody's being looked at and accounted for. So thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Davis, from the sheriff's department?
Yes.
That Mr. Davis, okay, I know who he is.
Yeah, he did a nice job.
Yeah, he's amazing.
I have an off-the-wall question.
Okay.
So do you think Philadelphia is going to come back for our students? We're in negotiations. Yeah, we're going to keep talking about that. There's your answer.
Yeah, I just, I just know that meant so much to so many students and families, and so we're just curious.
Sexton has taken the lead on that. She also, I think she agrees very much with that assessment of the importance of that trip.
Keep up the good work.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Breeding.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve?
So there's an item, some, Mr. Wooders has been known, said, you know, there is an item on the, on the consent agenda that probably needs a conversation. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh.
We need to have an executive session. It's a quick conversation.
Yep.
Um, with an executive session.
Yes.
We make a motion before law. Somebody needs to make a motion, yeah.
Yes, could I have a motion to, wait, to take that one out?
To break to, we can do that. The consent agenda.
Yes, right? Um.
Could I, or, or we could, you can make a motion to break, tell me, Stacey, if I'm wrong, to executive session now before we get to the consent agenda.
Yes, and then.
And then, then you pull it off.
Yeah. Okay, so we are going to recess the public meeting at seven PM and adjourn to executive session to hear discussion on personnel.
Yes.
May I have a motion? So thank you, Chris. And thank you, Tiana. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?